Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:06. I would like to call this meeting to order. Councilwoman Jones, could you do the invocation, please?
Certainly. Father God, we thank you so much for your loving kindness and your tender mercies on this day. We thank you for how you've blessed us and watched over us and protected us throughout this day. Now, Father, as we begin this meeting, we ask you to send your Holy Spirit to have precedence over this meeting, Lord. Let us work in decency and order. Let us work in wisdom and understanding. We give you all the glory and all the praise for the city of Glen Arden, for its leadership, for its people, and those that helped, Lord, to make this city the city that it is, the great city that it is. We thank you and we bless you. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
If I may, Council President, let the audience know that we're having audio problems, and so you're actually hearing the Council President and myself through the laptop. We're working on it. We apologize for the inconvenience. Councilwoman Fareed?
Here.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Here.
Councilman Harrison?
Here.
Councilman Herring?
Here.
Councilwoman Jones?
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Here.
And Council President Curtis?
Present.
All here in the counter for.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Jones, seconded by Councilwoman Fareed. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Herring?
Yes. Resolution R-57, 2024. I think that needs to come off because I was under assumption that it's being still talked about and negotiated, and there's some major changes that's going to come with that change. And I think it should have to come back to the work session for the council to decide if the changes are approved or not. I think it needs to come off for more discussion.
Well, it being on the, staying on the public hearing is consistent with what we've done in the past because we presented it in a work session. Members may have, not members, citizens may have comments about it. It's not going to go to the regular session. But to be fair to citizens who witnessed it in a work session, to be able to comment on it, they may have some of the same concerns that you have. But since they've witnessed it and heard about it in the work session, I believe they should be allowed to speak on it in a public hearing. But if the majority of the council would like to remove it, then that's fine with me as well.
But some of the cha-, ma'am, Mr. President?
Yeah, just speaking your mic.
Oh. Some of the changes I think were very, oh, some of the changes were very, I think were very, they were major changes. And I think that citizens may be speaking on it tonight, but that's not what they're going to be speaking on or looking at in the near future. So I just don't, I didn't see the need to have it on here if we're going to make, if there's going to be some major changes to it. I mean, I think some of the changes that I suggested, it's like four or five changes that I felt we needed to discuss, and I think that should have went to discussions, so.
Okay.
Whatever the majority feels.
Is there a second to remove it for this meeting?
I seconded if it was a lot of changes made.
Okay. It's fine by me. I mean, well, I'll just go around since the second. Madam Clerk, do you roll call to remove, what is it again?
So council members, we're doing a consensus to, or I'm sorry, a vote to remove Resolution 57 for it to come back to work session for additional work. Councilwoman Fareed?
Give me a moment. I'm just trying to get to which one Resolution 57 is.
The last one.
Can you say what the title of that one is?
For the grant writer, it's the municipal solutions. I'm sorry. Yeah, municipal grant services.
No, no.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
No.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
There are only three changes that in the, in the, in the meeting, in the work session that we went over that needed to be addressed. No.
And I'm a no with the reminder that I have every intention to not, this will not be on the agenda for the regular session until all the changes are made. And then if it's council's will, it can go back, it could come back to a work session, come back to a public hearing. But to be fair to citizens who witnessed us working on it in the work session, if they have some of the same concerns, I want to give them an opportunity to voice those concerns in this public hearing, which is why my answer is no.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
No.
Okay, so it will stay for public comments. Any other discussion? Hearing none? Any opposition? You want a voice vote?
Yes.
Okay. I can read your mind, Councilman Herring, sometimes. Madam Clerk?
Council, we're doing another voice vote?
To adopt the agenda.
To adopt the agenda. Councilwoman Fareed?
Let me tell you.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
I just want to say I'm hearing a lot of different echoes, but I think you're saying to put the agenda?
Yes, that's correct. Women. Councilwoman Guillaume, you're correct.
Okay, so yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
No.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Rick, do you want me to mute now?
Are we good?
Yes.
I muted my computer, so. Okay, I'll open mine now. All right. Okay, well, the agenda is adopted. First on the agenda is the presentation by Lexi Poll. Chief Bryant, do you want to come up?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Yes, we have Lexi Poll here today. We have Mr. Bowlin with the Lexi Poll system that he's gracious enough to get through a grant and part the money from his individual in this group, this great group. Pretty much what Lexi Poll system is, it's a system, online learning system, where all systems online, they're online training, also helps us pass our general orders specific to our agency and our municipality. So it's a tool and instrument that very effective in police departments and one of the things I tried to get, that I started with when our police offered to you. So thank you, Larry, for coming in today.
The mic is yours.
Chief, thank you. And Council President Curtis, members of the council, Mayor Cross, thank you very much. Just one minor clarification. It's Legit Local Government Insurance Trust providing funding that Chief Bryant applied for through Mr. John O'Connor's grant writing skills to give the city funding to start Lexi Poll program for the police department. And as the chief mentioned, valuable, we feel it is a valuable resource for the police department, particularly in helping with general orders and keeping things up to date because so many times in our travels across the state with the many municipal police agencies, we insure over 100 police agencies in the state. For those of you who don't know, Local Government Insurance Trust was formed in 1987 by act of the General Assembly of the State of Maryland on behalf of the Maryland Municipal League and the Maryland Association of Counties to provide insurance products and risk management services for the local governments of Maryland. And by doing that, we provide funding for things that can help reduce loss and provide training to both elected, appointed, and local government employees. And of course, our law enforcement community is a major piece to that. And we're very pleased to have helped the police department. In fact, I did a little bit of looking. Glen Arden has been a member of the trust. Come this October, you will have been a member of the trust since 19, since, for 35 years, since 1989. And we're very proud of that. You've been a member for a very long time. And we are made up of our members. Our members own and operate the trust on the behalf of the local governments of Maryland to provide you those insurance products and services. We also provided the city a grant in the fall of 19 for $5,000 for the body camera through the Axon Body Camera Grant to help get you started with that. So I'm very pleased on behalf of our executive director, Matt Peter, and myself, and the rest of the folks at Legit, providing the city a check to help start the Lexi Poll program for your police department, $7,394.15. So I'm very pleased to be able to present that. And I'd like to have a big shout out to Ms. Karen back there because she has been a tremendous help also with having your staff being trained. We've had, conducted several trainings here in the last couple of months, and we're very happy to be able to do that whenever you can host. And Ms. Karen, would you be so kind, take a photo as I give this, give this check to these fine folks? Mayor, would you, Council President, would you like to come down and just have a photo? Chief? Thank you all so much, Chief. Congratulations. And we're happy to help. And I hope to see some of you all at the MML Conference in Ocean City. Stop by our booth, please. And there's the letter for John. Okay? There you go. Thank you again. Take care.
You too. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is public comments on pending legislation. Citizens, this public hearing is primarily for you to speak and voice your opinion on legislation that the council is going to vote on next week. Some, we will probably not like the municipal grant solutions. But if you raise your hand, if you would like to speak and you're in person, please raise your hand, and I will recognize you. I ask that you, when you come to the podium, state your name, and then you will have five minutes to speak on legislation. Now, the public hearing is strictly for pending legislation. So if there are comments that you have that are outside of legislation, we encourage you to come back next week where there will be an opportunity for citizens to voice or talk about anything they want to talk about during the public comments. But for tonight, it's just pertaining to pending legislation. So with that, if anyone's online who would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand, and I will recognize you, and you two will have five minutes.
Point of order, Mr. President?
Yeah.
Since we have our illustrious Senator here, Senator Joanne Benson, and does she want to make a comment before we get started?
Yes, ma'am. Senator Benson, would you like to speak before we get started? Okay. Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you, Council Mayor. Appreciate that.
I've been having problems with, a terrible problem with allergies. It's been driving me crazy. But I want to, I want to talk about three things.
No.
I want to talk about three things. One, I really want to say I thank you all for the work that you do. That's the first thing that I want to say to you. The second thing is, if you look out on Martin Luther King Highway, you will notice that construction is being done on the highways. That has a lot to do with the work of this wonderful councilperson who started out. We've been working on this project for the past 10, 12 years, trying to get some work done on Martin Luther King Highway, new sidewalks and the repaving of the, of the highway. When Mr. Widenfeld, who's the Secretary of Transportation, came on board, we made a decision to go over to visit with him, to talk to him about some of the projects that were on our agenda that had not been addressed for the past 15 years. And one had to do with Martin Luther King Highway Route 704. He assured us that that was going to be taken care of. We started looking, as you all know, I sit, or may not know, I sit on the Budget and Taxation Committee right now, where I am helping to oversee the budget for this great state of Maryland. And this year, our budget was a little over $63 billion. We were doing well with the budget. Everything was all in place until the collapse of the bridge. And you all know the story about the collapse of the bridge. We were very devastated by that. So we had to go back and reorganize our budget. And we were just a little worried that the projects such as the one on Martin Luther King would have a profound impact, but we were assured by the Department of Transportation that it was already in place and that it was going to go along, and we were going to have the construction done. And I'm just very, very excited and delighted that that did, that the collapse of the bridge did not interfere with that. We have been following very closely with what has happened with the ship that's there. You all, I'm sure you all are following that closely. We're hoping that we will be able to move that within the next couple of days. I'm going to be going over to Baltimore with the governor and, and the delegations from the Budget and Taxation Committee, where we oversee the money that's going to be used to pay for the, for the, for the people who were just absolutely, they lost their job. We're talking about over 7,000 people lost their job just like that with the collapse of the bridge, not to mention the businesses and all the other economic problems that we have encountered. But I'm going to be going over on Friday to look at the progress that has been made relative to the removal of the steel and, and what we're going to be doing with the, with the ship that's going to be moved away from there. We hopefully will have that done by at least the weekend. Ships are now coming through. You know that that devastation had a profound impact, not only on the state of Maryland and the Baltimore region, but that impacted the entire country and even the world. There were ships that come in through, I mean, through foreign countries that pass through Baltimore, the Baltimore Harbor. So we are very happy that by the end of the month, we'll be able to get most of the debris clear, and we'll be able to kind of move along to get the ships moving again and get the people in the Balt-, who work at the Baltimore Harbor, get them back to work. It has been, it has been heartburn. I have to tell you all the truth about it. It has really, really, really been heartburn for all of us. We've been spending long hours. As a matter of fact, I just left Annapolis. We're working almost seven days a week down there, trying to be sure that the business of the state of Maryland continues and that we do what we're supposed to do in the way of helping the families and, and the people who worked at the harbor, and also being sure that the economy of the great state of Maryland does not truly suffer. So it has been really, really, really something. Back to Martin Luther King Highway, we're doing a lot of things in Prince George's County. The delegates and I worked very hard to bring back lots and lots and lots of money for the 24th Legislative District. So I want to just bring you up to speed. You all know that we had the Chair of the Budget and Taxation Committee to visit here with Chief Bryant and, and the, the council members and, and the mayor. We had him to come here to take a visit, to take a look at the police department. And we, we just couldn't get over it. I mean, it is a third world police department, and I know that the chief, before Chief Bryant, was very concerned about it because he voiced his opinion on numerous occasions to me. And so we made a decision to bring the person who really makes the decision relative to how much money we get to come here to take a look at the police department. We, we concluded that the money that we were asking for was well warranted. So this year, we put in a bond bill for Glen Arden for $2 million. We have received 1.75, 1.75 million for the police. Or did we get, did we get the whole $2 million? I know that that's also on the drawing board, another $2 million that's going to be promised for next year. So he's already told us. But I told him, we want the full $2 million this year so that we can put the shovel in the dirt and do what we have to do to move that project forward. If you look up at the Wegmans Shopping Center, you know the police department is in charge of that. If you look around Glen Arden, the police department is in charge of Glen Arden. And let me just tell you all, if you talk to people around the state of Maryland, they have nothing but rave reviews for this chief and the police department. And I would hope that you all will continue to throw your loving arms around this chief and these well, they are well-trained. People talk about them and the way that they respond up at the Wegmans, up in the shopping center, and the way that they handle the people here in Glen Arden. And I, you know, you don't get any complaints, but we have not in our office. So wherever I go, I always hear wonderful compliments relative to Chief Bryant and the way that he and his officers conduct business. So we did get $2 million. There's a police station that is in the Fairwood Shopping Center. It is almost next door to Safeway. They had asked us for $50,000 because the inside of the, of the police center is in need of repairs. We were able to give them seven, I think it's 75, instead of 50,000, we gave them $75,000. In August, at Lake Arbor, they have an annual jazz festival. Between 10,000 and 12,000 people show up. That's in our district, in Lake Arbor. They asked us for $25,000. We were very happy to give them the $25,000. We also got additional money for Sutland High School. You know, last year, we gave Sutland High School, we had the President, the Chair of the, of the Budget and Taxation Committee to give us $180 million for a brand-new Sutland High School. And we've been fighting for Sutland High School for about 20 years, and last year, we were given 180 million. This year, they turned around and gave us another $4,613,000. Now, the Village in the Woods is, I don't know whether that's in this, in Glen Arden? Village in the Woods? It's not in the municipality?
No.
They're having a terrible problem with their water main. They're having, just, the, I mean, the pipes are in terrible disrepair. So we were able to get $8,644,619 for the replacement of the water main or the water pipes in that, in that, in the village. And that is a grant from the, from the great state of Maryland. As once again, I told you all that the budget is, was $63 billion. We are also concerned about the Lidl Food Store coming into the, the shopping center where Wegmans is. We're, we're asking for a holdup on that. We've talked to the Chair of the Council and the, and the council members to hold up on that because we really do feel very strongly that it may not be good, we don't want anything to interfere with the progress that's being made by the Wegmans Food Store. We don't want anything to interfere with that, and we're just a little worried about that. And so we're in conversation about the, about the Lidl Food Store. I don't know whether you all want me to go into the blue line. That's, that's another 30 minutes, but I'm not going to do that. Let me quickly tell you all that I want you all to take advantage of the, I want you all to write this down. The Maryland College Promise Scholarship. That is through the Prince George's County Community College. It offers a free education for students who want to attend that community college. I want you to write this number down for the, for inquiry. And if that's not the correct number, I would ask that you all find the number for the President's Office to inquire about the Maryland College Promise Scholarship. We've got money that's set aside for students who want to go to the Prince George's County Community College. Do you all understand that if we don't educate our children, we don't have to worry about a future because there won't be one? So it's important for us to educate our children. Let's, let's not make excuses because if our children are not educated, ladies and gentlemen, they end up getting into all kinds of trouble. Now, I have some statistics that I would like to share with you, but it's not at this point in time because as, as I said, I'm sure you all didn't expect for me to come here tonight. The Prince George's County Public Schools got $2.8 billion. Did you all hear me? On next week, the delegates and I are going to take a trip down to see the superintendent and the members of his cabinet. We want to know what the budget looks like. We want to understand clearly. We want some accountability, please. Now, the other thing that I'm going to ask you all to do is, Judge Savannah Woods is a concern, you all. I'm going to ask you all to sit down with me to see how we, we're going to talk to the superintendent about Judge Savannah Woods because I think that the lines need to be redrawn. We have children coming to Judge Savannah Woods from over near college, near the University of Maryland. Why are they coming all the way over to Judge Savannah Woods? We're just concerned about the redrawing of the lines. That's not the only school. We have three or four schools that we are very concerned about. The enrollment is up. We have close to 700 kids over there. That's more children in that school than there are in some of our middle schools. That is, that is unacceptable. I could go on and on talking to you all about what I have on this agenda here, but I'd like to come back and talk to you just a little bit more about the budget, and I'll be very, very happy to help you all with anything that you have on your agenda. But I'm going to ask you all to continue to work together because my reputation is, you know, I'm not for foolishness. I want us to work together so that we can get things done for the city of Glen Arden. You all deserve it, and anybody who brings up the issue, anything that's not satisfactory when it comes to Glen Arden, I want, I want people to know that I'm going to speak about it because I want Glen Arden to be what I know it can be. This is the bedrock of politics for the great state of Maryland. Think about Tommy Broadwater. I could go on and on talking about the list of people who had their start here in Glen Arden. And I want you all to know that I have it in my heart to serve. And if there's something coming down the pipe that's not satisfactory, that you need to bring to my attention, or something that I'm doing that's not right, you let me know. Now, finally, I do have some handouts. It is my, it is the 20- It is my, it is the 200, the 2004 intercession letter. And if I could just talk about two things that are in this letter. If I could get someone to, to pass it out for me, please. Now, when you get this letter, just ignore the picture that's on the front. It's a real nice looking ID.
Thank you.
I'm not going to go through all of this with you all tonight. But I want you to turn the page and, and look on the second page. And it has to do with the Senate Bill 202, Income Tax Care Forgiveness. This was a bill, Senate Bill 36, was sponsored and strongly lobbied by the AARP. And what this bill does is if you are taking care of a loved one or an individual, if you've had that experience, you've had to reach in your pocket and pay for extra incidentals that helps that individual. What this bill does, it allows you a grant that you don't have to pay back of up to $1,500 for any incidentals that you may have to pay when you're caring for a loved one. Now, the question is, where does the money come from? When we talked with the Governor, he was very excited about this bill, and he set aside $50 million so that people around the state of Maryland could use, could apply for the grant in the way of being reimbursed for incidentals that they spend in taking care of the loved ones. Our Senate Bill 723, I could have cried when I, when I'm telling you, brought tears to my eyes when we talked about this. I had no idea that there were toxic heavy metals in baby food. I just couldn't believe it. I just, I mean, I just couldn't believe it. And we wonder why our children are having all kinds of mental health and all kinds of health issues. You take an opportunity, take a look at it. If you have any questions, you can, you can ask me. Call my office, you know my office number is 301, you all, you all have the number. I want you to turn over to the fifth page.
Excuse me, Senator, 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 could you put the mic closer because people at home can't hear you?
People can't hear me?
No.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I've talked about this. And at the back, the last page in the back, that just gives you an overall accomplishment of some of the bills that we were able to pass in Annapolis, which I felt benefited the people in the 24th Legislative District. So, if you have any questions, I am certainly available to answer them, okay? I, I don't want to rush through all of this, but there's a lot here that could be discussed. Senate Bill 36 was very troubling for me because we had a group of parents, mothers, fathers, relatives. One mother in particular had a son that was incarcerated up in Western Maryland. And he, and this youngster became very ill and went into a coma. The mother was not notified that this baby, and he was, I think, 21 or 22 years old, that he was in a coma until March. The mother came to visit us and to tell us about it, and we felt that that was, that was just disgraceful. And so, we put a bill in that says, "No, if, if someone who is incarcerated becomes ill, then the next of kin, someone in the family, needs to be notified." Or if there is somebody who, who suddenly dies, there needs to be an investigation. You don't just send the body home. There needs to be an autopsy or an investigation as to what happened to the, to the, to the individual. So, there's a lot involved in this report here that I'm giving you all tonight, okay? I want to say thank you all once again. I want, I want to thank the Town Administrator. I want to thank all of you all for the support that you have given me. And I want to tell you all one last thing as I go to my seat. Whenever I make a decision about what is in the best interest of the people in my district, I'm laser focused. I want you all to know that I am laser focused. I want the 24th Legislative District, from Sutland to Bowie, to be put on a level playing field. It is absolutely unfair when people are living in an area where there are 44,000 people and there's no grocery store, there's no doctor's office, there's not a bank, and the vast majority of those people are little senior citizens who are struggling. This job of being in the Senate is not about me because you all know that at my age, and as long as I've been in Annapolis, I could go home right now. But I don't think the time is yet. And I want you all to know that I am passionate about what I do. I don't like a lot of foolishness, and I don't, I don't get in the line because the line is forming. I get in line because I want to see that when I stand in line, that it's going to be in the best interest of the people that I serve. I learned a valuable lesson when Wayne Curry and I went to the Middle East. We went to the Middle East, ladies and gentlemen. And we were there for, I was trying to figure if it was 12 or 14 days. Wayne and I visited Gaza, we went to Palestine, we went to Jerusalem, we went to Israel, we went to all those small countries. We had the opportunity, ladies and gentlemen, to visit, I want you all to hear this before I set these pants on that chair. We had the opportunity to visit a museum, and it was the Holocaust Museum. Wayne and I and the entourage went in the museum. We walked around and we came to a film, and it showed the mother and her children and the fathers in a line moving forward. Everybody full of joy. Everybody's happy. Mama's happy, Papa's happy, children are happy. I can see them now. What they didn't know was they were marching into the gas chamber. Are you all with me? The valuable lesson that I learned from that, Wayne Curry and I came out of that museum and both of us began to cry. The valuable lesson that I learned from that is that you don't get in line because the line is forming. You get in line because it's the right thing to do. That is my message to you all tonight. Do your homework. Do what, if you're in a position of authority, if you're walking the streets, if you're living in a community, take care of the people in your community and role model what you expect from your children and from the children in your community. That's what I do in mine. And as long as I live, that is the way I'm going to live. There's nothing that's going to stop me from doing what I think is right. If I am wrong, I want you all to have the courage to say, "Senator Benson, what you said, what you did was wrong." And I'm willing to accept that because in my position, there are going to be good days and bad days. There are going to be right decisions and wrong decisions. But I have to accept it and keep moving and learn from the experience. And I want you all to know that that is on my heart, and I want you all to know that I truly mean. But we, we cannot afford any vicarious, any confusion because if you go in other places where we don't dwell, people are doing, if you look at how much money came back to Prince George's County, wherever the vast majority of the money went, you would feel like I do. I'm going back next year, and I'm more bound to determine that we're going to get more and more money. I asked them for $2 million for the, for the police station. I mean, I mean that. I, I, I want them to give me the money, not only for the police station, but there are several other projects that I want. And I want them to get it straight with the Blue Line. Okay, I finished. I said too much. Well, thank you all so much.
Senator Benson, thank you for all the work you do for the 24th District and particularly for the work that you do for the city of Glen Arden. We don't take your hard work for granted, and we will continue to follow your example to do what we need to do on our end to support you in any, any way that we can.
Councilman Behar, if you all wonder why I'm so unhappy about the Blue Line, could I just say one, just tell you, I'll tell you quick.
That's true, but you, people online can't hear you.
Last year, the delegates and I worked ourselves to death to get $400 million back to Prince George's County. $400 million, did you all hear me? Came back to Prince, what was the purpose of that money? That money was for the Blue Line. Where is the Blue Line, ladies and gentlemen? The Blue Line is Central Avenue. That $400 million was designed to provide economic development at the Largo Metro Station, at Morgan Boulevard Metro Station, Addison Road Metro Station, Capitol Heights Metro Station. That's the Blue Line, ladies and gentlemen. We had a briefing, and what we found out, that the $400 million was spent in Largo, Morgan Boulevard. Not a dime came down to Addison Road or Capitol Heights. Where there's no grocery store, where there's no bank, where there's no doctors. That's not right. Y'all, that's not right. That's not right. That's not right. If y'all think that's right, what are you saying? It's not right. In the alien world, we were fighting so hard for that money. Thank you all so much for listening to this, and I love you, it's for us.
You're welcome. Thank you for the lessons.
Mr. President, ma'am, very quick. Well, Senator Benson, yes, I'd like to thank you because when I came on the council in 2003, all we tried to do was get 704 paved. And it's, it's sad it took 20 years to get it done, but with your effort and you pushing, pushing forward to get done, I mean, it was, it was, it was hard, and I, and I appreciate all the work you've done for getting that done. Because I, I never understood why they always started at Albert Road and picked up on the other side and skipped over Glen Arden. But again, with your, with your, with your, the respect you have in the Senate and the respect you have in the state, I really appreciate all you've done for the city.
The little mayor that's gone off the block was also a headman. I'm trying to think of his name.
Henry James.
Passed away.
Marvin Wilson or Henry, Henry James or Marvin Wilson?
He was, he was mayor.
Yeah.
Hmm. John Anderson. John Anderson. Yeah, Mayor Anderson.
Wouldn't let it go.
Yeah.
Hit my face every five minutes.
Yeah. So, I appreciate it.
All those people, ooh, ooh.
Yeah, so I appreciate all your hard work.
What you did, you, you didn't let it go.
Yeah.
I want you to know I deeply and profoundly, for 20 years, think about it.
20 years, yeah.
20 years.
It took to get, get the streets paved, and that's, and, and, thank, 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 thanks to you, and you, like I said, and you're pushing it. And also with the police funding, again, appreciate it all because if it wasn't for you, we wouldn't have gotten it.
But we owe a lot of credit to the, the treasurer, Secretary Roden Bell. He was wonderful. When we went in there, he was wonderful, wonderful.
He knew, he, he knew who he was dealing with, though, that's the problem. He knew who he was dealing with, Senator Benson.
Thank you, Councilman Behar. All right. Now, without further ado, the section for citizens' comments is now open. As I said, when you come to the podium, please state your name, and then you have five minutes. At your five-minute mark, I will politely interject. Please do not take offense as we try to be fair with all of our citizens. So, the floor is now open. Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I have, I have questions concerning, what is this? This is the resolution that's dealing with the municipal grant services consulting. Okay, so, it is my understanding that this resolution has to do with a contractor that we already had. And from listening to meetings of the council, that the city, it's my understanding that the city manager had recommended that he be, that his contract be terminated, and the council also agreed and gave her the go-ahead to terminate him. So, my question is, why are we extending another contract to him when she said she was unable to work with him? First, I just do want to say that I appreciate the grant that he did get for the Police Department, but apparently, he's not working out with the city manager. And second, the city manager, why is the council bringing him back and undermining the city manager? What is so special about this contractor that you're not listening to, to or supporting your city manager? And it's also my understanding from the meetings that, discussions in the meetings that you all have had, is that the city attorney had recommended that this contractor not be brought back, but you all are not listening to him because this resolution is saying that you're bringing him back. So, I just really don't think that this is in the best interest of the city. If I remember correctly, the city manager had recommended another contractor who has been successful in getting grants for the city previously. But from my understanding, the statement what had, that was made was concerned that he's outdated, he's, he's a thing in, basically, my words, a thing in the past, and you shouldn't be listening to him. But he was effective previously. So, I'm not understanding why it is that we're bringing this, this contractor back to do work for the city when clearly, the, he and the city manager don't get along. He's not listening to her or whatever, just based upon the information that I've gathered from you all's meetings. That's not, he's not working with her, and she can't work with him. So, why are you forcing her to work with him? Those are my questions concerning this piece of legislation.
Okay, so, ma'am, so you have two minutes left. Do you want, do you have anything else, or do you want me to respond?
You can respond to me, and I might have to respond back to you based upon what you say.
Just saying, it's, it's going to be in the.
Based upon what you said, based upon what your answers are to me.
Okay, so, thank you, that, one, thank you for your comment. I'm a bit concerned, though, because in a public hearing, we've never discussed a rift between the city manager and the grant writer. And in fact, the information that you provided as it relates to what our attorney advised us was only discussed in a closed session. We never discussed that publicly. So, I'm concerned that there's someone leaking closed information to you because nobody else has that information.
Okay, maybe, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
One second. One second. So I'm not at liberty to discuss what our attorney has discussed in private with us.
Okay.
And respectfully, you should not have that information. So that's not any fault of yours, somebody shared that with you who should not have shared that with you. As it relates to the grant writer, it was voted by council that historically, and you are a former council member, you could probably attest to this, that the grant writer reported to the city council. Previously, the grant writer and the city manager were working together, but the council deemed that the grant writer should report to the city council. Having said that, it was the council's decision who want, who the council wanted to be the grant writer. So the grant writer, by vote of the council, will, well, we haven't voted on it yet, but it hasn't come to the floor to vote yet. But if the council should vote yes, then it will be with the municipal grant solution. If they vote no, then it will not. But we have not voted on it. I thank you for your comments on it, but.
Could, could I clarify something, please? Okay.
One second.
Sure.
I'll allow you to clarify, but that has to be your final comment because your five minutes are up. So just with that understanding.
Well, thank you for taking up all the remainder of my minutes. Excuse me, I appreciate that, but there has been conversation in public meetings concerning this. Maybe you don't remember, maybe you don't listen, but I am a listener and it has been brought out, comments have been made that things were going on. So I beg to differ with you, things were, and that's where I got that from.
Thank, thank you. Respectfully, I do listen and I know for a fact that what our attorney discussed with us was not discussed in public meetings, ever. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
But those are my comments.
Thank you.
Council President, may I?
Uh, yes, Councilwoman Guillaume.
I just want to echo what you just stated, Council President, that there has never been a conversation regarding what an attorney has, what our attorney has shared with us regarding this contractor in public, never. I also want to say that I, as a council member, have never, ever had a conversation with our attorney about this contractor. So I am extremely concerned that information that is being stated publicly right now by a citizen is being presented as if it was done publicly when that was never done. Has there been conversations about a contractor or contractors? Yes. Has it been done in public, excuse me, closed session? Yes. But certain information that was shared right now was never done in public. And I am extremely concerned right now that certain things that have been coming out, or excuse me, that came out right now from a citizen could have only come out from information gathered from a closed session where people expressed their opinions, again, opinion, but nothing that was factually based. So I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Guillaume and Councilwoman Fareed.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'm also very concerned with the comments that I heard, knowing that I've only participated in conversations in closed session. And as Councilwoman Guillaume stated, I have not heard anything directly from the city attorney regarding the city's relationship with the consultant. As you stated, Council President, the relationship between the grant writer and the city is under the jurisdiction authority of the city council. I would say that we are not working at the pleasure of the city manager, but actually the other way around. So if the city council has decided that there is a grant writer that we want to engage with based upon their qualifications, we, we should hope that all administration and personnel would act professionally and work together for the good of the city of Glen
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments? Anyone online? Okay. Hearing none. This council tonight is expected to go into closed session pursuant to the annotated code of Maryland State Government Articles 10-508A. The council, by majority vote, may retire to executive or closed session at any time during the meeting. Should the council retire to executive or closed session, the chair will announce the reasons and a report will be issued at a future meeting disclosing the reasons for such closed session. And tonight, the reason for council to adjourn to closed session is to discuss a legal matter and personnel. Is there a motion for council to close this open session?
Someone.
Is there a second? Second it? Any discussion? Madam Clerk, could you do a voice vote, please?
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume? Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
And Council President Curtis?
Yes. The vote carries. The open session of the meeting is now closed. I want to thank everyone for coming out. Our next meeting will be Monday, correct? Next Monday at 7:30. At that time, you'll have another opportunity to speak on anything, not just the legislation that is presented here tonight, but you can talk about concerns that are near and dear to you or anything that you would like. So with that, I hope to, to see you Monday at 7:30. Thank you.
Let me make it clear, facts. This was supposed to have been a public hearing.